One of our near neighbors decided to give up the ghost, sell out, go west and pick fruit for a living. They lived on sandy land, pasture land, south of the river, but owned a quarter north of the river that adjoined the Stevens Ranch. This was his only farmland, one hundred and sixty acres, very necessary part of his operation. When he decided to give up and leave, he came over to the ranch and asked Dad to buy his quarter of good land. So Dad gave him his price and he proceeded to have, the businessman proceeded to have an auction sale, sold everything he could load into the Model T and pulled out. Two years later, Ed drove in the yard, the same old Model T, and sheepishly asked to buy his farmland back. He had decided that old North Dakota wasn't such a bad place after all. Now this land had become real and useful part of the ranch. In fact, our land bounded it on three lines, three sides. Now Dad could have refused or told Ed he'd think about it, but no, he came to the house, got the deed out of the safe and handed over to him. When Mother asked why, his answer was short: Ed needs it. We'll proceed on then to the heart of the matter, which is the second page. That I am requesting the following, that Mercer County maintained the Stevens Bridge for as long as practically possible as a memorial to times past. That the commission formally named the Knife River Bridge at Stanton the Stevens Bridge. I don't know if you've ever done that. It's been just known as the Stevens Bridge forever and ever. On the register of historical places, it's known as the Knife River Bridge. If you, if you surf the web, you'll find it under both things, the Stevens Bridge and the Knife River Bridge. I bet you don't have any, I don't have any, do you have a guest? Yeah, okay. Well, we'll deal with that later. But it's, I was surprised at what's on the internet about the bridge. It's, it's kind of amazing. That the county erect signage to indicate that is on the National Historic Places Register, outline its history and the new, and its unique type of construction, and designated as a memorial to the Joseph E. Stevens family. Well, now we have this little thing about what's sitting over in the parking lot over there. And this is, this is my idea. Now, first of all, I, I didn't have time to determine who owns that. Anybody know?
This, this parking lot over to the east over, or west over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Mercer County bought that from where I wrote.
Alright.
And the reason was is when the Hadda'atsa and, and they had their program out here, they had set up various tents and various vendors and stuff. And, and so we had purchased that for that particular reason, yeah.
Okay. So, that current marker's off way in the back of that lot. I mean, it's virtually out of sight and out of mind. So, this is my suggestion, is that it's a nice pull-off we have there. I mean, people can pull off on both sides, get back on and off the road. Is, is to put the marker closer to the road. Instead of way in back of the lot, put it closer to the road. Move that marker, put it up closer to the road. And construct an additional marker that explains more about the bridge. And on the next page, that's suggesting wording for the plaque. And that's just what it is. It's a suggestion. There are so many things that you can do with the plaque. You can put more in there about what type of, the type of construction of the bridge, maybe a little bit of the history. You can put a raised pictograph of the bridge on there. I mean, there, there are many things that you can do with the design. And so, put those two side by side. And then again, as you've seen, as you've traveled, put signage that says historical marker ahead. And people can pull off into that parking lot and look at those two things. I guess that's, that's the long and short of it, what I'm asking you to do. It is, it is, as I said, a unique bridge. And, and I think that's what the focus should be actually, and really, is that that bridge is truly unique. One of very few that are left in the country. And as I said, when you get online and, and look online, you're amazed that people have visited this bridge, taken pictures of it. There's a, an artist, a photographer, that has a beautiful picture. I can't, can I get online? Do you have a password that I can use? Okay. I really want you to see it, I want, because it's, it's an extraordinary picture. I asked West River, California.
Not an R.
Guru down there. Yeah. I don't.
Do we have more?
How do I access that location?
Well, I think if you have it here, it's a potential vandalism. If you have it back by the bridge or. Yeah, no, I, I haven't looked how much all of this costs or if there's any. Right, as I say, or if we can even, it's like the roadside age, you know, I don't know. That has to come specifically from a certain location and that has to be approved. I can get that.
Marvin? Marvin? Do you know what the capacity of the bridge is? I can't, I can't find it anywhere.
I can find that. I have it at home. I don't have it with me.
Oh, you know, I think that's, there's nothing posted on it that says the capacity and maybe that's something.
If it's a certain rating or above it, they don't have to be. If they're certain, if they're below that capacity, they have to be stamped, as I understand it. So, I don't know. I, like I said, I have that information at home, but not with.
I think that's out by the bridge.
I actually think we did some repairs on the bridge, underneath the bridge, the last couple of years due to erosion.
Yeah, I found a, I found an inspection report that said that kind of around some of the piers, it was being washed away and. Okay.
Yeah, we did some work with the Mercer County Water Board. They had some concerns there too. We worked in conjunction with them to get the repairs on.
Just go for it?
Didn't even find a seal for it.
We gotta fix it, right?
I think, I think it was through a film that was so long because of that flight. Hit some of the people or something.
They're about to say.
I was gonna say, that's the brown rock.
Then the guy in touring.
Viking crews. Going on a river cruise.
For the plaque?
We just were off.
Okay.
We went from Prague to Budapest.
That's a little hard, that's a little hard to see that from this far away.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's photoshopped in that, I don't think he was standing there at the moment that thunderstorm occurred.
Probably not.
But it is, it is a striking picture. And it looks like it was done probably not too long after the bridge was reconstructed. I, I'm not sure. It looks well painted. And. This is, this is actually one that I liked too, another photographer, professional photographer. This looks like it was taken right after it was refurbished. These types of bridges aren't particularly photogenic because of their simple structure, so there's nothing extraordinary about it. But people have gone quite a few miles. There are, like everything else in the world, people who have interest in old bridges. This is a website called Bridge Hunter. And so this guy drove from wherever and took a picture of the bridge and logs it on to this site called BridgeHunter.com. So there are people who apparently travel around the United States or North America and.
Look at bridges.
Take, look at bridges. Yeah, amazing, you know? That people have all these interests. Again, you can find more under Knife River Bridge too. Here's another guy. Stop by, take some pictures. I think probably this is, I don't know the dates on this, but. Took some pictures of the bridge and the area around. I think this was before, maybe it was restored. So, you know, we have good visitation of people that go back and forth to the Indian villages. Some people might be interested in driving out to the bridge if they know it's there, taking a look at it, taking pictures. And, and so I see it as part of the tourism business too in this area. And, well.
What I would like to do, Dave, is, this is my own idea, is I want to run this through the County Historical Society and the State Historical Society. I want to see if they have any grants or monies available to help with something like this.
The answer is no.
The answer is no? You already done that trap line, no?
That's the first question I asked.
Okay, I took care of that one.
The State Historical Society will help with the restoration of objects, but not signage. Mercer County, they're, they're always short of money. I mean, they're just, and, and not to say that it's impossible. They, they are able sometimes to write grants, you know, but you have to write, you're probably gonna have to write a grant. They don't, what I'm saying is they don't have it in the bank right now.
I know that. We weren't expecting that.
They'd have to see if they can get some money from grants or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
But that, that is my request. I, I understand, I understand the money. This brass plaques ain't cheap. I mean, I looked at just a little one to put, to put on the girder and, and that was like seven hundred and fifty bucks. So, you're looking at thousands to probably do a plaque like this, so. And, and, and I didn't really look any farther because we haven't decided on what to say on it or what to put on it. So, no point in getting prices yet until a decision is made about what to say, or if you want to do it, I guess.
Well, I thank you for your presentation and I don't know if there's anything that we could decide today because a lot of this, we'll have to look and see if we can actually do it. If we have the authority to do it.
We would have to incorporate it in our budget for next year.
Yeah, we'd have to, it's information at this point. We have to decide, one, if we want to look at spending the money. Two, what wording do we want to do it? Because when I first look at this, I would edit your message quite a bit, try to get the cost down. That way you have bigger letters and the plaque's more visible, you know, but there's considerations that we can't make all the decisions on today.
And I think we'd have to find out for sure too, you know, like as far as signage wise, you know? We have to talk to DOT, have to talk to different associations. And then also too, what it actually would entail to take and change it from the Knife River Bridge to the Stevens Bridge. Is that something possibly that we can actually do, or if it has to be done a different way too, you know? Just a few things that we wanna round off to make sure.
I asked the State Historical Society that question and they had no, I don't know how to phrase it. I guess they have no, nothing against you naming it. The Stevens Bridge, formally naming it the Stevens Bridge. It doesn't matter as far as the historical places go, doesn't matter. You did a very, very good job of giving us information and presenting it to us. It's a worthy endeavor to pursue. It's been, it's been, not been done for some time, so it might take some more time to do some more homework and look into it.
Thank you. I appreciate your time very much today.
I appreciate yours too, sir.
You bet. Thank you. I learned, learned something today.
I grew up real near that. The gravel pit my brother and I own is just a little bit further east.
Behind your house almost.
Yeah. I grew up calling it the Lost Bridge, traveled it many times.
Yes, that's what we always referred to, yes.
I'm sure you were over there many a times, throwing pebbles off the village.
Okay. Pretty interesting. You wanna take a little recess, bathroom break, or you wanna go right into it?
I have no idea. Which one are we doing first?
I'm okay with jumping right here.
On their way back to town or?
They were just in their office, okay.
For the executive meeting? No.
I want to take that chair back down here so they can hold it. Actually pulled up the minutes. They pulled up the minutes, the time and the candidates, said what the contract cost, who the contractor was. Proved to get this built.
That is really cool.
Okay, we got left on other business, treasurer resignation. What, what do we got? I guess I didn't, who put it on? What's the question with it? Oh, okay.
So now we just need to go to the next step.
Okay. So we have written notice on the resignation of Darby Berger. So, we use a motion to accept the resignation.
I move to accept Darby Berger's resignation effective August fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll, I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
So you don't have to come in on the sixth?
Sixth is a Saturday, so.
I probably will, I have some, some stuff in August to, for the Dackel stuff to take care of. I promised Dawn I would help her, so.
And then we talk about replacing?
Replacement, yep, correct. So we'd have to advertise for the position, I believe, is the.
We don't have to.
We don't have to? Okay.
We do not have to advertise. I'm ju, I'm just saying we don't have, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying we don't have to. We can, we don't even have to interview. We can just appoint someone. We can appoint just anybody that we so choose. We don't even have to appoint Dawn. Now pick, just, just because you're sitting there and picking on you. No, I'm just, I. Am I correct, Ms. State's Attorney? Yes.
Well, if we don't have to advertise, is there a motion to appoint Dawn?
First we need to ask if she's willing.
Dawn, are you willing? We don't need to assume that, but she's running for the position, so.
Talk about a couple.
Sure.
Yes, for, go ahead, Jean.
Nope, we have a motion.
No, we haven't had a motion.
No, we don't.
Just for clarification, do we have to appoint someone to the treasurer's office? In other words, do we have to appoint any of the elected positions? Do we have to appoint someone or can we wait? Could we wait until the election fills the position?
You can do this a number of ways. One, you could, I, I'm gonna throw this out because she's the only one who stepped forward.
Yes.
This has nothing to do with it. She was a friend of mine in high school and I've had nothing but respect for her since we were in grade school.
Good job.
But Dawn's the only one who stepped forward and said, yes, I want to so serve the county. So what you could do is appoint her as acting treasurer and then let the election decide. And from what I understand, Mickey Mouse didn't get that many write-in votes here in, yeah, I asked, curious. So you could appoint Dawn as acting treasurer because we have the election so quick. You could appoint anyone who's qualified to do it. It's up to the commission to decide what's best for the county when an elected official resigns midterm.
As I understand, Todd, the appointed, the position responsibility goes to May one. So if we appoint her as acting treasurer, it'd be till May one. That's when they.
Because the treasurer, unlike other county officials, due to budgetary things, and the treasurer and the auditor are pretty busy about the time that the new elected officials come in on an election cycle. That's the reason that the legislature has set that, that they take office later than the first of the year, as many other positions do.
So even though there's an election, we would need to appoint the individual to go through the unexpired term, essentially?
Or you can leave it open. There's no hard and fast. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. The voters ultimately decide. So you'd be completely within your rights to appoint Dawn to fill out the term. I'm not con, I'm, I'm not saying whether it's good or bad. You could leave the position unfilled until the election. Personally, again, taking off State's Attorney's hat, I think it would be the logical thing to appoint Dawn to finish the term.
Okay.
And of course, I'm one who looked some of this stuff up, but I would need to be, have clarification on this. And I'm gonna use Dawn as an example because she's running for that office. So if an officer is elected to fill an unexpired term in an office held by an appointee, such officer may qualify and enter upon the discharge of duties of such office at any time after receiving a certificate of election to that office, but no later than the first Monday in January next succeeding the date of the officer's election to the unexpired term of office. So it wouldn't be necessarily until May. It'd be January at the latest because it's an, an appointed position and it's on unexpired.
Auditors and treasurers are treated slightly different as to their term.
I was gonna say, it could be till the end of May, which is what I would recommend due to exactly what Todd expressed, is that if we, someone different or inexperienced person was elected and we put them into this position the first of January, it would be unfair to them and possibly to our taxpayers. We should have the experienced person go to the end of May and then that person assume at that point.
Anyway.
And I just want to throw out that prior, when we, when this happened with the recorder and then also just currently with the auditor, we did post it to be available, but I'm, that's just been in recent.
As with the State's Attorney too.
Todd, my experience is that we've always advertised. I've only been here four years, so there isn't that many, but there's been a few. Do we, have we set a precedent and if we don't advertise, are we putting ourselves in some kind of jeopardy?
Not necessarily. The law says you don't have to. Best practices says to do so. But you're not violating any law if you just appoint. And the reason the best practices of advertising is when we have a circumstance where we would have a number of people. Let me just throw out the hypothetical. Let's say two other people were running against Dawn. That would be essentially this commission saying, this is the person we want, without giving the other person an opportunity to apply. That's why it's best practices, but it's not illegal if you don't advertise.
But in this case, we have no one, we have one person running for the position.
And you're fully within your rights when you have an elected official who's unable to complete their term. So you just appoint somebody to fill out that term, especially this close to an election.
Yeah, and that's, I would like, I, my, my recommendation would be that we just appoint Dawn to fill the position until the election, let the electors decide. And I'm also looking at, at cost to the county, because when we advertised for the auditor's position, it was, I mean, it isn't like hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it is an expense to the county. And in this case, no one else is running. And I, and I do understand that write-in can, could win the election. I get that. I'm not saying that Dawn is gonna win the election. I'm just saying, but the way it looks and with her experience, I think we could just appoint her for now and.
Right, and also previous ones, I mean, we, for the recorder, we essentially in the middle of the term, so it was gonna be two years until that position was elected. On the auditor position, we were going into an election type thing and there was more than one candidate too.
Correct.
I mean, different circumstances for different issues.
I'm in agreement with Jean that all we need to do is appoint. But I differ with him that the, if we appoint, that she should actually fulfill that position to, to the end of the present term. So I'm gonna make a motion to that effect for discussion to see if we even get a second. But I move to appoint Dawn as acting treasurer to the end of the present term.
Okay, motion by Marv to appoint Dawn as treasurer to the end of the active term. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza. Any discussion?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I, I, I disagree with Jean too on the fact that my term, had I stayed here, wouldn't end till May first. So, but, you know, that's whether, and Dawn wins in November, she's stuck with, would have been stuck with me till May first.
Right, and I'll, I'll talk with Todd and even Travis later. But state statute does, does specify unexpired and vacated positions are handled differently than current. If you had, had, if a person does not resign and fulfills their term, yes, then it would be May first, but.
Just throwing out my opinion.
No, no, I'm just saying was, but, but because I'd have to, we'd have to follow state statute is what I'm getting at. Regardless of what we agree upon. So, that's a discussion later I'll have with our State's Attorney to see.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to appoint Dawn as treasurer?
I'm not qualified. I didn't get the call, like Jean knows. Dawn, you're a very good candidate.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Marv?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. Dawn will be the. Dawn will be the treasurer effective after August 5th. So it'll be the next Monday, August 6th or it would be.
Basically, yeah.
Yep.
So are we putting in the paper for a deputy treasurer?
Um, I, I guess that's, it will be Dawn's department. So within the department, it's handled by the department, correct?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yep, so if she wants to advertise, that is her, her job.
Do we have to talk about salary?
We need to talk about salary too. So.
Okay.
I don't have their salary table, actually, I probably do have their salary table in front of me.
I've got a head of some here.
Do you have it?
Somewhere in my pile of.
I believe, do you mind if I give the numbers?
It's, it's open.
In a matter of public record, yep.
Okay, as I have on this year's for the 2023 salary budget recommendation, and if this is correct, I believe it is, Dawn is presently making $57,158 as a deputy. Uh, the treasurer makes more money than that, so. I'm not sure if we need to disclose everything there, but I'm not trying to be, it's public, okay. Darby makes, Darby makes $69,948.
No, I don't make that.
The treasurer.
There you go. No, I don't make that.
For 2022?
Would that be what my news, maybe I have to think about this. I don't make $69,000.
I think that's it.
These are the recommendations for 2023, correct?
Yes.
We're looking at 22.
What's your current salary?
To be truthful, I don't. $4,016 a month.
That's after you.
That's with taxes and everything taken out, right?
Darby, that's what, that's what I received here.
So I'm wrong.
Yeah, I wish we made it without the taxes, but.
Oh, man.
That's what it is.
Did you know you were making that much?
I did not.
That's your gross. Okay, so I, I gave those two numbers to help us.
I might have known that.
See the relationship and possibly help us with the recommendation for Dawn. How many years have you been treasurer, Darby?
Me?
Yeah.
Since 2000, I was elected in 2006.
Six? You're going to make me do, make me do the math?
16 years.
Yeah, I got, I got it.
I've been here 10.
You've been here 10 years? I'm just shooting from the hip just for ideas, guys, and I want some help on this. If Darby's been here 16 and Dawn's been here 10, the difference is about 12,000. I would like to split that difference. Because the, for the, for the appointed term. One is, one is.
So 6,000 added to.
One is 69, well, it's actually 70,000, 69,999, so 70,000. The other ones, oh, I looked at the wrong one, 69,947. The other one's 57,158. Subtract those two and divide it by two, that's zero. That's 6,300, well, I can do it, I guess. Who's going to calculate that?
63,500.
63,500, no, not quite that.
63,50.
63,50, yep. So if you add 63,50 onto the 57, what's that come out to? You got that punched up there?
63,508.
So that was one way of possibly determining a salary. Does anybody else have another scenario?
And that would be just through?
Through the end of the term.
Through the end of the term and then?
The wages would be determined on our budget.
On our budget. Input?
That's just one way of doing it. There's, there's a little bit of logic to it. Like what I said, it makes sense if you don't think about it.
So the 63,005 or whatever it is would be till the end of December and then I would just kick in with everybody else for the raise portion of it in January?
It would be to the end of May, that was the end of the, my suggestion was to the end of the appointed term. Then the actual, the actual salary would be determined at our budget time for at the end, from the end of term.
I think why, I think why Dawn is asking this is because everybody's getting raises.
Yeah.
So she's wondering if she gets to get the raise with everybody else or if it just stays the same.
Until May, yes, that's what I, yeah.
And then, once she would be fully in elected, she would get the treasurer wage.
Should have it correct.
I think that's why Dawn's asking, especially if she's not sure, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. So if everybody else gets a raise January 1st, she would also get the same raise?
Correct, that's what she's asking.
That, yeah, my answer is yes.
I would say that would be appropriate, I, I feel.
To do it otherwise would be arguably illegal to do it other than that.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any other ideas? Or a number just to go to the top of their head?
I don't know, I like even numbers. I would suggest just go with 65, but.
I'm going to take the recommendation and make a motion that we. Set Dawn's salary to the end of the appointed term at $65,000.
Okay, motion by Marv to set the wage at 65,000 to the end of the interim term. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Taken by Eliza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Okay.
Clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
Now, I didn't have that accounting skill, so I couldn't, I, I just couldn't run against you, Dawn.
And that's effective.
Or help you.
Does, yeah, does that sal, does that salary start August 6th? Is it pro-rated for the month or is that for the entire month this?
Whatever.
I'll weave it down up to now.
Fine, however, it's, it is what it is. It can be for the entire month for all I care.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you for accepting it.
Okay, I want to take a break.
You want to take a quick break?
We have more executive session, sure.
Not yet.
No, we still have.
We have that executive session.
Is it the last thing?
It's the last thing.
Can I bring up one more thing before Jean runs away? Well, I just, I just want to know, so what am I looking at for a wage for my deputy? If I advertise and I hire out, what can I reasonably pay this person or do I not run that through you? I just, I mean, how do I?
That's whatever would fall within your budget.
Yep, so you'd have to get with the auditor and figure out where your parameters are for that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
As your recommendation is.
We can control that.
Okay.
If it fits within the budget.
You have to follow.
Okay, yep, I got it.
That we control. Am I saying that right, to be very crass?
We try, yep.
Yep.
We use this bucket of lunch.
And I have to figure out.
You can use it within proper parameters, you have to run your own.
Okay, all right.
Amazing.
He's got that point, he's going to pay more than you're making, I guess.
Thank you, everybody.
Let's take a five-minute recess.